Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday Night, June 14 Business Meeting of 2021. The meeting has been called to order and the Board has just reconvened from closed session. I would ask that I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, we will begin with setting the agenda. Five point zero one, I would ask that I have a motion that the June 14, 2021 Business Meeting Agenda be approved as presented. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Blackwell and a second by Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will move to six point zero one and I would ask that the, have a motion to approve the Personnel Recommendations and the Administrative Contracts as presented. So moved. Second. I have a motion by Blackwell and a second by Adcock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And next, we will move to our recognitions. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, we're going to move down to the minutes. Six point zero two, almost skipped right over. Are there any comments or questions?
Please remain confidential.
So I will read that the closed session minutes of the March 22, 2021 Budget Work Session, the April 13, 2021 Public Hearing, the April 19, 2021 Business Meeting, the May 20, 2021 Business Meeting, and the June 3, 2021 Appeal Hearing be approved as presented. So moved.
Say.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Ms. Ferr. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now, we will begin with our recognition, seven point zero one, and we will start with the Teacher of the Year, the Board of Education Representative Recognition by Dr. Keisha Khan. If you'll join us at the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Mr. Schultz. And good evening to everyone watching on the live stream. Tonight, we would like to thank Emily Wagner, the 2020-2021 Teacher of the Year for her service as the teacher liaison to the Board of Education this past school year. As a third grade elementary teacher at Arbrow-McAllister Elementary, Emily's dedication to our students, school, and community is unparalleled. Emily, we are grateful for your commitment to the education profession. You have been a valuable member of the Board of Education and your professionalism, poise, and teacher leadership do not go unnoticed. Thank you for your time and dedication as teacher liaison and for your service to the students and families of Cabarrus County Schools. If I could ask you to come forward. I also want to present Emily with a small token of our appreciation for her service as teacher liaison this year. Thank you so much.
And Emily, on behalf of the Board, we would just like to say thank you for all of your input and your feedback that has been a good part of our discussions, and we wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Next, we will move to seven point zero two, Teacher Leaders Cohort, number seven recognition, and we'll keep Dr. Keisha Khan.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to talk about our Teacher Leader Cohort. According to John Maxwell, there is almost no limit to the potential of an organization that recruits good people, raises them up as leaders, and continually develops them. During the fall of 2012, several Cabarrus County School District leaders envisioned a program to extend the learning of teachers and allow the exploration of leadership options while still remaining in the school building. The group before you this evening is the seventh cohort of the Cabarrus County Schools' Teacher Leaders Program. This group met for the first time in spring of 2019 with a total of 31 teachers who accepted the challenge. Tonight, we end with 25 graduates. In addition to these pursuits, teacher leaders also collaborated with their principals to develop and take on leadership roles within their schools. Within this group are elementary, middle, and high school teachers, instructional specialists, instructional coordinators, media specialists, technology facilitators, intervention specialists, and school counselors. Many of these teacher leaders also serve in leadership roles, including PLC leaders, TLT team members, SIT team members, cooperating teachers, lead mentors, and mentors. Our goal for this program was to provide these teachers, who were already outstanding in the classroom, professional development to help extend their skills to increase the capacity for leadership in their school and in our district. These teacher leaders now use their enhanced skills to have challenging conversations, make strategic and sound decisions, build leadership capacity in others, understand and explain the essential components of effective instructional and engagement practices, and teach their adult colleagues differently than they teach their students. One participant in the cohort said, "This has helped me to step out of my comfort zone, become a better role model in our PLCs, and helped me have more of a voice." Another said, "This program really made me pay attention to some of the details that I normally wouldn't recognize when it comes to leadership. It also allowed me to see how valuable relationships are and how to handle difficult situations that arise in the workplace. It is evident these teacher leaders now have the knowledge and leadership skills to extend their influence within and beyond their classroom." At this time, I'd like to thank all of our teacher leaders for their hard work in this program and every day in their leadership in their schools. And since we are recognizing these teachers virtually, I'm going to call out each teacher's name. The following teachers are graduates of the seventh cohort of the Teacher Leader Program. Melissa Adronya, Trakita Arrington, Tracy Brennick, Melissa Cordier, Derek Florence, Christina Gardner-Hatchen, Tina Hartzell, Jill Henderson, Julie Karp, Lindsay Landers, Daniel Maxwell, Emily McIntyre, Brittany Dorsey, Kristy Moore, Elaine O'Connor, Lauren Petty, Sharon Pilkington, Jennifer Rinker, Nicole Russell, Jamie Schrock, Jennifer Sutton, Whitney Terrain, Kimberly Trailer, Katie Wiggins, Erin Wilkerson, and Shelley Walkenfuss. Congratulations again to all of these staff members on completing the Cabarrus County Schools' Teacher Leader Program.
And next, we will move to seven point zero three, Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we will keep you again.
Next, it's my pleasure to recognize our final Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for the 2021-22 School Year. We offer a tremendous thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their continued generosity and support, especially during this most unusual year. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for June is David Rivero. Mr. Rivero is the band director at Hickory Ridge Middle School. He was nominated for this award by a student who wrote, "Mr. Rivero has gone above and beyond to help me grow as a musician and as a person over the past three years at Hickory Ridge Middle School. He takes a personal interest in each of his students and makes sure that each one of us is not only successful with our instrument, but also in our daily lives. He offers so many extra opportunities to help us grow, and with him in our classroom, we know that we are supported and cared for at all times. Even during COVID and social distancing, he made sure we were able to participate in the music program. His class is always fun, and I've learned so much. I can't believe how far I've come with his support over the past three years. Mr. Rivero, thank you for all that you've done to help your students grow and develop as musicians and for ensuring that they were able to participate in the music program despite the challenges presented by the COVID pandemic. Congratulations on your selection as the June Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for Cabarrus County Schools."
Thank you, Dr. Khan. Next, we will move to seven point zero four, Student Scholarships and Achievements, and we will have Mr. John Vasilis to join us at the podium.
My favorite time to be here in front of you is the time to celebrate the outstanding achievements of some of the best kids in the world, in my opinion. I'm going to start with a quote and just share with you something that Victor Frankl once said. He said, "What is a good life must endure birth." So I say, think about all of the young people that recently graduated that you all helped get across the stage. They've been through what many people call the most difficult school year ever. Our students face challenges that there was no blueprint for, and they endured and they prevailed. So the young people that graduated this weekend, they--
Mr. Vasilis, are you keyed up? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Keed up and excited, right?
Both.
Your mic, please.
Your mic, please. Thank you.
How about now?
It's not, it's not--
Is that better?
Yes, yes. Great. My apologies.
Yes, to both. So the young people that graduated this weekend, they demonstrated the kind of courage, optimism, and tenacity that really is the hallmark value of Cabarrus County families. So while we celebrate all of their accomplishments, tonight, I want to introduce you, by way of these slides, to three small groups of Cabarrus County students who are poised to launch into an amazing future. So for their parents, this is a culmination of a lifetime investment of love and effort. For the counselors who nominated them, this is recognition that gives them great pride. So ladies and gentlemen of the Board, it is my hope that you will see each of these young people as a symbol of hope. They have achieved remarkable accomplishments in the most challenging of time. Our first group featured here to be recognized are those who are honored for their commitment to excellence, rigor, and service to the United States. These young people have been accepted to prestigious service academies. They are Samuel Cochran from Concord High School, who will be joining the United States Air Force Academy, Jackson Moon, also from Concord High School, who will be joining the United States Merchant Marine Academy, and Elizabeth Smith from Early College, who will join the United States Naval Academy Prep School. So please take a moment and honor them. Okay, so our next group of students are being recognized for prestigious scholarships. This was a very interesting and difficult process for us this year, and it's become more difficult because our students have gotten more and more scholarships. They've achieved more, and I just think it just speaks to the caliber of students that we're producing. At one point in the process, when we were nailing down who would be recognized tonight, in the middle of it, there were something in the area of 85 names, and they were continuing to add because everybody wanted to recognize their kids, right? So the simple truth is, we would be here all night if we wanted to recognize every student that was truly worthy of recognition. What we're doing tonight with the scholarships is we'll recognize those young people who are granted the Full Ride Scholarship to college. So if we know of any student who received a Full Ride Scholarship, I'm going to share their names with you tonight. There are other, many worthy students out there who got other great scholarships, but we'll focus tonight on Full Rides. The reason for that is we believe Full Rides are the most prestigious award an institution can bestow on a young person, okay? All right. So on your slides, you'll see Sarai Acosta from Early College. She received a Presidential Scholarship for Greensboro College. Bryson Battle from Hickory Ridge High School, who received the Presidential Scholarship for Boston Conservatory at Berkeley. Amaya Beard, who received the Park Scholarship for Hickory Ridge High School, going to North Carolina State University. Bellamy Cono, who received, who's from Early College, who will be going to UNC Chapel Hill and received an academic scholarship to UNC Chapel Hill. Rema Koari, who is also at Early College, will be going to Princeton University, where she received a Full Ride Scholarship. Catherine Cummings from Cox Mill High School will be going to UNC Chapel Hill, and she received the Helen Craig Wardlaw Scholarship. Raven Gray at Cox Mill High School will be going to Winston-Salem State and has a athletic and academic Full Ride Scholarship. Abigail Gunita Avila from Concord High School will be attending Emory University on a Full Ride Scholarship. Our next group of students, Rebecca Hinson from Mount Pleasant High School, will be attending Fireford University through their Presidential Scholarship. Janay Hunt will be attending North Carolina A&amp;T State University, and she'll be receiving the Aggie Merit Scholarship. She also came from Early College. Katie Messick, also from Early College, will be attending High Point University and be the recipient of the Presidential Scholarship. Izegi Nwanji Emrewen from Concord High School will be attending North Carolina State, North Carolina Central University, and she will, and that person will be receiving the prestigious Chetum White Scholarship. Stephanie Ritz will be attending North Carolina State University, receiving the Good Night Scholars Program, and also is from Early College. Akilesh Shiva Ramakrishna from Concord High School will be attending Duke University, where they will be receiving the Benjamin Duke Scholarship. Elijah Sommer from Cox Mill High School will attend High Point University, receiving the Presidential Founder Scholarship, and Brandon Wilson from J.N. Robinson will be receiving the North Carolina State University Scholarship, Park Scholarship. Please take a moment and recognize these folks. The final group of young people that I'm going to recognize tonight are rising juniors who will attend the prestigious North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics. As you may know, North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics is a two-year public residential high school that's located in Durham. It focuses intensely on science, math, and technology. It accepts rising juniors from across the state and enrolls them through their senior year. It is a public school. It is a public high school, but it's incredibly selective, and it's highly competitive to be, to be given this honor. So the young people that you see before you are the young people who will be going to this school when school resumes in August. Pranava Khela from Cox Mill High School, Simran Aurora from Hickory Ridge High School, Vashita Chitaluru from Hickory Ridge High School, Jessica Fawn from Hickory Ridge High School, Venkat Ganti from Cox Mill High School, Shanugadu from Cox Mill High School, Kenzo Hubert from Hickory Ridge High School, Shantosh Kandala from Cox Mill High School, Rashidra Medimani Yuri from Central Cabarrus High School, Kripa Patel, also from Central Cabarrus, Aditi Patel from Cox Mill High School, Priyaya Ponakar from Cox Mill High School, Reshan Raghu from Cox Mill High School, Anushri Ramananjam from Northwest Cabarrus High School, Jonathan Rogers from Northwest Cabarrus High School, Sophia Sang from Cox Mill High School, Salish Sati from Cox Mill High School, Kishav Saxena from Hickory Ridge High School, Ayush Sheeth from Cox Mill High School, Ayush Subra Manaya from Cox Mill High School, and Shria Waddakkar from Cox Mill High School. Please take a moment and acknowledge these young people. So just a final thought. The young people we've honored tonight will face many challenges in life ahead. They've already proven their grit and determination, which again are just core values of Cabarrus County families. I just want to thank you for honoring their many great accomplishments and the many great things to come in the years ahead for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasilis. Next, we will move to seven point zero five, the Career and Technical Education Achievements, and we will have Mr. Rusty Parker to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's my honor I get to recognize students who've excelled in career and technical education this year. Family and Career and Community Leaders of America, or FCCLA, is a national career and technical student organization for young men and women in family consumer sciences, education, and public and private schools through grade 12. The following students earned first place at the North Carolina FCCLA State Leadership Conference. And we had two schools that had first-place winners. First, from Central Cabarrus, their advisor is Carol Parrish, and in the event Old to Gold, the winners were Trinity Coats and Savannah Edwards. For the event, for submitting the chapter service portfolio, the winners were Vida Takat Kor Takang and Danielle Anoha. For the event Sustainability Challenge, the winners were Jordan Hill and Gabriel Talahumbu. And then, from Hickory Ridge, their advisor is Lisa Palmer, and the two that were entered in that event called Focus on Children was Sanjana Kamimetu and Vashista Chitaluru. And those are the winners for Family Consumer Science. Distributive Education Clubs of America, or DECA, is an association of marketing students that encourages the development of business and leadership skills through academic conferences and competitions. The following students earned first place at the North Carolina DECA State Leadership Conference. And again, we had two schools represented, Cox Mill and Hickory Ridge. The advisors at Cox Mill are Tina Martin, Patricia McTeague, and John Hot. And their winners, first-place winners in the event VBC Accounting, was Nathaniel Savores and then Automotive Service Marketing was Vedish Thima. Community Giving Project was Tisha Abdul. Virtual Business Challenge in Sports, there was two winners in that event, and one was Emery Leida and Ethan Cummings was the other winner. And then, in Quick Service Restaurant Management, was Priyanka Mistri. And from Hickory Ridge, their advisor is Ellen Machado, and she had two winners in her team. For Business Financial Services was Shray Chandey. And for Principles of Marketing, it was Elena Maxwell. So congratulations to all the DECA winners. FFA is the next one. Future Farmers of America is an intra-curricular student organization for those interested in agriculture and leadership. The following students earned first place at the North Carolina FFA Western Regional Event. We had two schools represented, Central Cabarrus and Mount Pleasant Middle School. From Central Cabarrus, their advisor is Rachel Adams and Melanie Parker. And the event where Cecilia Higgins was the winner in the public speaking event, so congratulations to Cecilia. And then, Mount Pleasant Middle School always does an exceptional job at the state conference. Their advisor is Ashley Miller, and they actually had winners in two events, two team events. First-place winners for Parliamentary Procedures was Connor Holstein, Maggie Garito, Hampton Garito, Jordan Lambert, Elijah Lambert, Caitlin Coley, Zach Howell, Kaylee Gilbert, and Hunter Gilbert. And then, in the first-place poultry division, the winners were Jordan Lambert, Connor Holstein, Chloe Griffin, Omar Sidewee, Emma Chapman, Noah Alred, Kaylee Gilbert, and Mackenzie Williams. And that's our winners for Future Farmers of America. We always have a really strong showing for HOSA as well. And Health Occupation Students of America is a career and technical organization for students planning to pursue health professions. The following students earned first place at the North Carolina HOSA State Leadership Conference, and they're all from Cox Mill. Their advisors are Jennifer Ripper and Jody Yao. And for Medical Math Event was Shiva Getareddy. And then, for Nutrition was Jerry Chin. For Pathophysiology, man, I couldn't take that. Nina Lorenzo. And then, for Medical Spelling, couldn't pass that either, probably. Abey Shukaluri. Congratulations to all the Health Sciences winners. Health Sciences was not my area. We had one additional, two other winners, additional winners, for national recognition, and I wanted to recognize these two gentlemen. CTE would also like to recognize two of our outstanding STEM students from Central Cabarrus High School. They are Marshall George and Major George, and they won the STEM Engagement Award in NASA's 27th Annual Human Exploration Rover Challenge, or HERC, H-E-R-C. HERC stands Task U.S. and International Student Teams to Design, Engineer, and Test a Human-Powered Rover on a course that simulates the terrain found in rocky bottoms, bodies in our solar system. The teams also must perform mission tasks while negotiating the course, including sample retrievals and spectrographic analysis. So congratulations for winning the NASA STEM Engagement Award to Marshall and Major George. And that is the CTE Awards. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move to seven point zero six, the Fine Arts Achievements, and we'll have Dr. Crystal Hill.
Good evening. I am standing in for Mr. Bart Tolbert, who is our Fine Arts Coordinator this evening. And we have two special individuals that we would like to recognize. The first one is for art. I would like to recognize Noorali Pareek, who won the 2021 Congressional District Eight Art Contest, which is sponsored by Congressman Richard Hudson, for her piece entitled Michelle. Her artwork will be framed and hung in the United States Capitol Art Gallery for the next year. Noorali is a rising junior at Concord High School, and her teacher is Mr. Ben Maribelli. So congratulations to Noorali. Our next student is a theater student. His name is Bryson Battle. Bryson Battle won the 2021 Best Actor Bloomie Award on Tuesday, May 25, for his performance of Quasimodo's Song Out There from the musical The Hunchback of Notre Dame. He will now move on to the National High School Theater Awards, also known as the Jimmy Awards, which are named after the famed Broadway producer James M. Milander. Typically held in New York City, the 2021 Jimmy Awards will be presented virtually on Thursday, July 15. Bryson is a senior at Hickory Ridge High School, and his teachers are Mr. Ian Sullivan and Mr. John Whitner. After graduation, Bryson will be attending the Boston Conservatory at Berklee College of Music on a full scholarship, where he plans to pursue a degree in musical theater. Please join me in congratulating Bryson.
Thank you. And next, we will have seven point zero seven, recognizing our Board Intern, and we will have our Board Member, Mrs. Denise Sadcock.
Okay. I would like to ask Finley Edwards if she'll come up to the podium. Finley served as our BOE intern this year, and I want hats off to her for several things. She served and met with our, at our meetings, but also she was very involved in changing the leadership experience for the Board Intern students for next year. She helped to adopt a new structure, a new program that we're continuing to work on. She also served with the Cabarrus County Education Foundation that helped to deliver the teacher appreciation gifts to schools. She also met with the High School Advisory Council to the Superintendent on several occasions to partnership to talk about other leadership opportunities as well. So we are just so thankful that you were able to do that this year, and we appreciate your service. So I've got something for you if you'll walk right up--
Gift of our appreciation. Thank you so much.
And congratulations on your graduation. Okay, Board Members, we will move to eight point zero one, which is the approval of the regular business and work session meetings. So I need a motion that the minutes of the March 22, 2021 Budget Work Session, the April 12, 2021 Work Session, and the public hearing of proposed 2021-22 Budget, April 13, 2021 Public Hearing on Student Realignment, the April 19, 2021 Business Meeting be approved as presented, or if there's any noted corrections or questions. No, so moved. I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Mr. Ferr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And next, we will move to nine point zero one, and I will turn it over to Interim Superintendent Brian Schultz for superintendent comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll keep my comments brief tonight because, as we just witnessed, the awards and recognitions really sum up the amazing work of our students and staff in our, in our district, in many diverse areas and many diverse students. And I think that's really, was very representative of our school district and very proud of their achievements and very proud of the adults that stand behind them to accomplish those goals. So I want to thank the Board Members tonight for their attendance and support of our staff and students at the crowning achievement of K-12, pre-K-12 public education. The graduation ceremonies we held were a moment in time that represents the best of what our community does to pour into the lives of our students. Graduation represents the 13 years of formal education from the amazing Cabarrus County School staff to the 18 years of guidance from parents and guardians and the resources of community, of our community, of mentors, elected officials, business leaders, and civic groups who have contributed to and inspire our educators and our students. Lastly, the heroic efforts of-- Lastly, the heroic efforts of the Charlotte Motor Speedway personnel, our law enforcement partners, and the Cabarrus County School District and school staff made the ceremonies extremely special to our graduates and their loved ones. There's no doubt that everyone working behind the scenes on Friday and Saturday were able to get a week's worth of steps in, in about two days. So once more, I want to congratulate the class of 2021. Your efforts this year will not be forgotten. Just a couple other reminders, Summer Jump Start and second, about Second Chance Camps and Summer Jump Start. So last week, from June 7th to 9th, our students participated in our Second Chance EOG and EOC camp. That camp was held for students who passed a class or a course but did not score proficient on an EOG or EOC exam in grades 3, 8 for math, 5th and 8th grade for science, and Math 1, Math 2, and/or Biology. Also last week, CCS began Summer Jump Start. Summer Jump Start is to provide support for students at risk, for grade retention and academic failure, and for EC students on the Extended Content Standards. Summer Jump Start began last week on June 10th and will run through July 29th. We have approximately 3,000 students participating at 11 school sites across Cabarrus County. Lastly, our school nutrition department began providing summer meals to children in the community today. Meals are free to children ages 1 through 18, and you can find the bus routes and the stops on the school nutrition page on our district website. On that note, I'd like to wish everyone a safe, happy, and enjoyable summer. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just add comments that we had 11 high school graduations, over 2,550 graduates. And while the staff is still totaling scholarship awards, what I posted was there has already been earned over $39 million in scholarships. That's a lot. And we'd also like to say a special thank you and shout out to Ben Allred for his leadership and his team in making the in-person graduation possible for our graduates, and to wish him a happy birthday, because he spent his birthday out there with us Saturday. So that was great. Board members, do you have any comments that you would like to add as well, Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I would like to congratulate all the seniors that graduated. And I did want to let everybody know, we did wash these shirts. We wore them all weekend, but they were washed for tonight. Because we all participated in the graduation, and this is what we wore. But we do want to congratulate. I think all of us had a wonderful time participating, and, but we do, I think with all of us, I think I speak for all of us, we all enjoy. That is, to me, for me personally, that is the best part of this job, when we see those seniors walk across that stage. It makes it all worthwhile for me. But thank you, Madam Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Absolutely. Anybody else, Ms. Sadcock?
I do want to also just say thank you to everyone that helped out with graduation. It was an exciting time, and we were maneuvering through the showers and changing times, and everybody that helped to do that. It was phenomenal. I do also want to just say that we are taking applications for next year's board student intern, and that application is now out on the BOE website. So if any students want to participate, they can go out and look at that.
Thank you. Mr. Farr?
I'll just echo what Ms. Carpenter said. This is, like some of us, this is about the eighth or ninth time I was participating in graduation, and it is honestly the most satisfying part of this job. I mean, there's miracles that walk across that stage every year, and it's just an exciting time, and I just appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Walter?
I guess I'm going to echo what everyone else has previously said. It is an honor to be able to do that. One of the really neat things that we get to see is the kids come across that stage and get to congratulate them. So again, congratulations to the class of 2021. There was a ton of people that were behind that, and thanks to all the parents and the staff and the principals that helped get those kids across that line. Thanks.
Ms. Blackwell?
So I'll just say ditto, but I also want to say thank you to the staff for being able to make it happen so that these kids could actually walk across the stage this year. I know that that was very quickly put together, and we weren't really sure exactly how that was going to turn out, but I think every parent that I've spoken to, and all of the seniors that got to graduate this weekend, said that it was a wonderful experience and definitely, hands down, best experience, best thing about this job. So glad we got to be there.
Ms. Sandage?
Well, I won't mess up the rotation. I'll echo what everybody else just said. This was my first time being able to participate from a board member standpoint at graduation, and it was absolutely amazing. I'm glad that we were able to do this for this class. I did get some messages from the 2020 class, and I just want to apologize to them for not being able to do the same thing, but just know that we appreciate your accomplishments, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So I just want to say thank you to our staff, too. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, would you like to make some comments?
Congratulations to the seniors. Your life is just starting. You're going to make us proud, so congratulations.
And would you like to take your time or opportunity to say anything about your position since you're leaving us?
I just want to say thank you. It's been an honor and such a learning experience to be here in such a complex year, and I feel like I've grown so much just from being here in this experience, and not always doing it perfect, but having grace to learn from that and to grow. And so just want to thank everybody for your service, and just the staff in Cabarrus County. This position has given me such an appreciation for the amount of people who are working behind the scenes to do what we do for our kids so they can graduate and walk across the stage. So to everybody, thank you for allowing me to be here and to take up space this year. So thank you so much.
Thank you for being with us. Okay, board members, we are going to move to 10.01, which is Guest Speakers Address the Board. I'm going to read the procedure for tonight, and then I will call the individuals to the podium one at a time. In accordance with Board Policy 2310, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. Sign up will be available 30 minutes before the meeting begins. Speakers must sign up with the board clerk no later than the normal start time of the regular scheduled monthly business meeting. Speakers may sign up with the board clerk via email, corina.neville@cabarrus.k12.nc.us, or by completing a contact information card. Speakers must include their name, group name if applicable, address, and phone number, and list the general education-related topic of their presentation for the board minutes. During the public comment period, the board chair will recognize speakers in the order in which they signed in. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with the additional information in written form. If an unusually large number of people requests to speak, the majority of the board may decide to reduce the time for each individual or to require the designation of a spokesperson for each group of persons supporting or opposing the same position. At any time, the board may establish additional procedures to ensure that public comment sessions proceed in an efficient and orderly manner. Generally, personnel, confidential, and specific school-level matters will be handled in accordance with board's grievance policy and/or the appeal rights afforded under the North Carolina general statutes, and are not the proper subject of the public comment portion of the board meeting. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentations will not be acted upon at the time it is received. It will take a unanimous vote of the board members present to take action on a presentation considered to be of an unusual or emergency nature at the time it is presented. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with General Statute 143-318.17. And with that, I will begin and ask Mr. Kenneth Wortman to the podium. Mr. Wortman, I think you are representing a group, so you will have five minutes, and you may begin. Yeah, actually, that one may be having some issues. Can you, yes, that one there, and that should work.
Which one?
That's it. You may begin.
All right. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak again at the board meeting tonight. I've been aboard in front of you guys several different times. I'm a little disappointed that no one asked me what my preferred pronoun was before introducing me to speak, because some of your teachers find it appropriate to ask our kids what their preferred pronoun is in class. They even asked last week at West Cabarrus High School on the first day of summer school. Asking a child what they want to be called is completely fine, but asking them about their preferred pronoun is completely unacceptable. While the board appears to be handling complaints as they come in, and the superintendent definitely appears to be setting the example we want to see, some of the teachers are still operating as they please. It's time that we start holding the principals accountable for the actions of their teachers. They are responsible for their school, their teachers, and it's time to start making examples out of the ones who continue to want to push the limits. One of the easiest things we can fix is the dress code. Our kids are held to a dress code at school and are often sent to the office and required to have a parent bring a change of clothes. If our kids have to follow dress code, then the teacher should as well. What happened to professional parents? It is still listed under Policy 7340, and I quote, "The board affirms its expectations that all personnel shall be professionally neatly and appropriately attired for the work to be done. An employee's dress must not disrupt or distract the educational process. Prohibited clothing that is mentioned is Number 4 of Policy 7340 stating clothing or tattoos that contain profanity or nudity depict violence or sexual nature by words or symbols. Number 8 states any item or clothing or jewelry that creates a disruption at the school environment or learning activities." So I ask, why are teachers wearing Black Lives Matter t-shirts and earrings at Concord High School and Odale Elementary School? That is not appropriate for the classroom, and if they want to wear it, they can wear it outside of the school settings if they so wish. We also have teachers that are incredibly disrespectful to our kids via email, in person, and online. High school is a chance for the kids to grow up into young adults, and there's already enough bullying going on between them. We don't need the teachers adding fuel to the fire. I find it interesting that the snarky comments condescending emails and disrespectful attitudes only happen while talking to our kids. The second we respond back as a parent, it is a completely different tone. Our kids are not punching bags for teachers to take their bad days out on. Cabarrus County has found out that while a lot of people will sit back and take it, some of us hit back, and we will not back down. There are people that believe CRT is not here in Cabarrus County. I would urge those people to do curriculum reviews for the teachers that teach our kids. My wife and I did countless reviews. The process in itself is a joke with no continuity between the schools and how it is conducted. The only thing that was identical was that I was not able to make copies, I could not take pictures, and I only had an hour to get it done. If the curriculum is good enough to teach our kids, then why can't I have a copy of it? Some of the schools had paper copies with certain pages that were missing from the controversial errors, or a random page in Spanish that would be submitted in that section. Certain schools had it available via computers where some of the links were broken, or you couldn't access certain sites. Concord High School had printouts for kids for learning how to speak English. The pictures of one of the lesson plans were credited to tolerance.org, which is now Learning for Justice. I implore you to go to tolerance.org and ask yourself why any of that belongs in a classroom. Their goal is listed as, and I quote, "To be a catalyst for, to be a catalyst for racial justice in the South and beyond, working in partnership with communities to dismantle white supremacy, strengthen intersectional movements, and advance the human rights of all people." Northwest Cabarrus High School civics is riddled with indoctrination in CRT as well. Students have to take a survey from Youth Learning Initiative to find out if they are Democrat or Republican, with questions such as, "America's high crime rate is directly traceable to a cycle of poverty, poor healthcare, poor education, and discrimination. Gay marriage should be legal, and limiting the sale and possession of firearms does not violate the Second Amendment right to bear arms." There's an article from The Economist titled, "Why Evangelicals Love Donald Trump," that is absolutely disgusting to read. This comes from a source when asked if they are a left-leaning or right-leaning publication, put a statement September 3rd, 2013 stating, "We like free enterprise and tend to favor deregulation and privisation, but we also like gay marriage, want to legalize drugs, and disapprove of monarchy." Central Cabarrus High School civics class names all of the presidents, yet when it gets to President Bush, they are referred to as Daddy Bush and Baby Bush. This stemming from a teacher that started a club at Central where white students were not allowed to join. Patriots Elementary School sent out an email and phone call regarding the sex education class being offered to 4th and 5th graders. I personally called the principal to want to review it, and I was told that I would be gotten back to. He did not get back to me, and I was told that they were having issues with parents being able to have access to the link. Transparency is the only way Cabarrus County is going to resolve this problem. There have been bills passed requiring transparency in classrooms, but the teachers are fighting against it. I simply ask, why would you fight this if you have nothing to hide? If it is good enough to teach my kids, it should be good enough for me to review. The problem with the curriculum review process isn't always the curriculum, it's the teacher inputting their personal beliefs and opinions, along with outside links. You already have to make the lesson plan, make the PowerPoint, and put together the resources. One more step isn't that much more to ask for. Time for transparency is now, and the board has the opportunity to make that happen via policies and procedures. You now have a good school board attorney that you've hired that will make it happen and not waste the people's money or the board's money. One last thing I'd like to add is, there are obviously a lot of great teachers. You said 39 million in scholarships, all the kids' pictures that were up on their board, there's teachers that are doing the right thing. We're just asking for the wrong ones to get cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number two, Devon Mullins. Good evening.
Good evening.
You can begin.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Devon Mullins, and I use he/him/his pronouns. It's an honor to be back in front of this board. Four years ago, I attended every meeting as an intern with the school board, and it's a pleasure seeing many of you that were here back then, still serving the Cabarrus community. And it's nice to see the tradition of having interns is still alive and well, and that someone as impressive as Finley has served in that capacity this year. I would be remiss to not begin my remarks by thanking Cabarrus County's school system for all it did for me as a student. Because of the public K-12 education offered by Cabarrus County, I have been tremendously successful in college, and about, and am about to graduate and begin what I hope will be an equally successful career. Despite the abhorrent lack of support for teachers in North Carolina, Cabarrus County has managed to retain, in my view, the best of the best. Indeed, I remember the name of every teacher I had in Cabarrus County schools because of the impact they had on me, and I attribute all of my success in part to them. It was after speaking to some of these teachers that I've kept in contact with that I decided to speak at tonight's meeting. The overwhelming message I received from them about their experience since I left was negative. I heard about teachers being harassed, bullied, and not being supported by the county office. Worse yet, none of them were prepared to speak tonight for fear of retaliation. This is not the Cabarrus County I know. Being a student of Cabarrus County schools means something. I have often had enormous advantages when applying to scholarships, internships, and even jobs, because our county is known to produce global leaders, critical thinkers, and solution-oriented problem solvers. And that is best achieved when teachers are empowered to have difficult conversations with their students about complex issues. One example from my own experience is my 6th grade English teacher, who anchored all of our literature that year on the Holocaust. We still learn metaphors and similes and active reading skills, but we were able to apply these skills to a complex historical event that made all of us more thoughtful learners. This experience made me acutely aware of the nuanced injustices that exist in our society, and I'm proud to say that because of the education provided by that teacher, I'm completing my honors college thesis right now on the Israeli-Palestinian conflict and issues in the Middle East. Similar conversations happened around race, gender, and sexuality. I never found out any of my teachers' own opinions, but I always felt prepared afterwards to engage in a world, better yet, be a leader in a world, where these issues exist whether we want them to or not. We live in difficult times, and the echo chambers we create for ourselves prevent us from rising to the occasion and addressing the complex issues that we face today. I learned a lot as an intern for this board, but the one thing that always stuck with me is that politics does not belong in local government. The failure of our state and national leaders to treat these issues appropriately does not have to mean failure for Cabarrus County. I'm asking the board to take these issues seriously and support the teachers that make Cabarrus County so great, even in the face of those who concoct conspiracy theories that target teachers. Otherwise, we will fall behind in quality education and lose the reputation that has helped me and so many others be successful. I am tremendously grateful for your time, and it's good to see many of you again.
Thank you. Speaker number three is Stacy Paulson.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for having me. As you mentioned, my name is Stacy Paulson. My oldest child will be attending 1st grade at Oakdale Elementary in the fall. I'm here today because of the tyrannical, unscientific, and damaging mask mandates that are being forced on our children. I can understand the concerns some have towards COVID-19 from what we've all experienced through this past year and a half, but it is unacceptable to take away our right and choice as parents to make decisions on what is best for our children. It is not a one-size-fits-all situation, but it is being treated as so. There is little logic and common sense being applied since many of the facts go against the recommendation to mask our children. Let's take into consideration the following. COVID fatality rate for ages 0 through 18 ranges between .001 and .003 percent, or in other words, a max of three deaths for every 100,000 infected. 434 deaths associated with influenza occurred during 2019 to 2020 season among children ages 0 to 18, which was out of 38 million infected, in other words, .001 percent. So why are we masking our children for a virus that has virtually the same fatality rate as the flu for children 0 to 18? Sure, we don't want our kids to get sick, but if they have a 99.99 percent chance to recover, then you can see how this is exaggerated and a little bit ridiculous. Not to mention, they wear a mask at school but can go to the grocery store, restaurants, and basically anywhere else without a mask, because that makes perfect sense. As you may know, Fauci's emails were released recently. We now know that he has known all along, non-surgical masks do not work because the virus is small enough to pass through them. enough to pass through them, and masks are for infected people because asymptomatic people cannot spread the virus. These masks are psychologically damaging to our children. I watched a child across the street going into the grocery store, and he dropped his mask on the ground. He proceeded to throw himself on the ground crying hysterically because he thought he was going to get sick without a mask on. I've heard school nurses coming forward with reports of children who have thrown up in their mask but refuse to take them off, allowing the throw-up to sit on their face all the way to the nurse's office out of fear that a virus would get them. Additionally, facial expressions are a critical part of cognitive development, and the ability to identify emotions from facial expression begins in infancy, and the ability to attach labels to basic emotions continues in childhood. The ability to recognize facial expression of emotion is to integral in social integration, I mean, interaction. Leading neurologist and neurophysiologist Dr. Margaret Bryson, M.D., Ph.D., has gone on record stating that the rebreathing of our exhaled air will without a doubt create oxygen deficiency and a flooding of carbon dioxide. We know the human brain is very sensitive to oxygen deprivation. Oxygen deprivation can cause metabolic changes that happen in neuronal cells and are vitally important for cognitive function and brain plasticity. The acute warning symptoms are headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, reduced ability to concentrate, and reductions in cognitive function. These are harmful effects, and they far outweigh the risk of COVID-19. I don't work for the school board, but if I did, it would make me sick to know that our kids are suffering and nothing is being done about it. As a parent, I just ask that you consider that, and if there's anything we can do to take that away and stop the abuse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number four is Samuel Gass.
Thank you to members of the board for allowing me to speak tonight. It's my first time speaking, actually. It's been made aware to me through both former and current teachers at Cabarrus County Schools that there is a current campaign of harassment and opposition to what I would like to describe as a straw man. A straw man that there is some form of indoctrination of critical race theory going on in Cabarrus County schools. If we, you know, if you simplify critical race theory, it can be simply, you know, defined by two things: that racism exists, and it has influence on day-to-day lives and history, and that there's a way of combating that, and that requires collaboration and requires the free movement of ideas, which, you know, if it might be up to certain people who have previously spoken, those that one agrees with would be considered dogma, while those disagreed with would be viewed as attempts of indoctrination and swaying to a specific political cause. If you look at the facts, you know, which are readily available and are not steeped in conspiracy, as others might frame it, what's happening is that which has happened across history all over the world. Buzzwords such as indoctrination or a method of creating a straw man, acting as a fictitious enemy obfuscating the truth of the matter, this view that any attempt at teaching the nuance and therefore intentionality of history is an attempt at indoctrination is ludicrous, and it accomplishes multiple things. It handicaps students, silences teachers, and serves the interests of those wishing current viewpoints to not be questioned. As someone who went to Concord High School, was in the IB program, which, for those that know, teaches an international curriculum, we, while having a greater level of learning regarding the actual history of events, still, I personally and many others were handicapped when it came to college and the real world, lacking an actual nuance and understanding of the world and the way that historical processes impact our lives today. I would question those that frame this as an issue of indoctrination to ask themselves, you know, a couple of questions. How did I get here today? Why am I framing it in this manner? And what are the current ideological processes that are taking place? I would answer that by simply saying that, you know, this is an issue of political disagreement, but also it is an issue of obfuscation, obfuscating history and attempting to handicap students and importantly, teachers and their ability to teach in their own classrooms. I would implore the school board to support teachers and students. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Lindsay Landers.
Good evening. My pronouns are she and her. I am here today to address the need for a bereavement policy for Cabarrus County school employees. Employees deserve a minimum of 10 days of paid leave if desired upon the loss of an immediate family member. My husband, Mike Landers, also a Cabarrus County Schools employee, passed away unexpectedly March 30th. When HR contacted me two days later, I inquired about the bereavement policy. The response was, "Cabarrus County Schools does not have a bereavement policy. Most people take three to five days. If you would like more time than that, you need to take FMLA." Suggesting that three to five days for the death of an immediate family member is not only insensitive and supportive, it is irresponsible. It is shocking to think that employees are expected to be at work, fully functional, and able to fulfill all duties related to teaching after only three to five days. This short amount of time is insufficient to plan and hold a funeral and perform administrative estate tasks. Imagine losing your significant other or child. Would you be able to fully function at your job? Now imagine teaching in a blended classroom, students in front of you, students online. What would that look like? What would it feel like? Not just for you as a teacher, but for the students in your class. Next, consider FMLA. Family medical leave can only be taken for medical necessity, such as caring for a sick family member, having a baby, or having a medical condition that prevents you from working. It does not cover the death of an immediate family member. In order to take FMLA, I would have had to have been diagnosed with a condition myself. I was not sick, and grief is not a medical condition. Moreover, the lack of a bereavement period does not align with the values of Cabarrus County Schools. The vision of Cabarrus County Schools is inspiring minds, engaging hearts, and shaping futures, with a mission that includes providing a caring, disciplined, world-class learning environment. Goal three of the strategic plan states that every student, every day, has excellent educators. Essentially forcing teachers who have been impacted by the loss of a spouse to return to the classroom immediately does not account for the magnitude of loss. It does not account for time to process grief. It does not account for the needs of the employee. It does not account for the needs of students. It does not align with the values, mission, and goals of Cabarrus County Schools. Though my situation is rare, and it is tragic, a version of loss occurs for Cabarrus County Schools employees every year. I implore you to develop a fair, reasonable, and supportive bereavement policy for all Cabarrus County Schools employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, board members, now we will move to items under number 11.01, which is the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion that the June 7th, 2021 consent agenda be approved as presented? So moved. I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell.
Second.
Second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We do not have a closed session scheduled for item number 12. We will move that one, and I will ask that we move on to our adjournment. I would say good night to our viewing audience, but before we do that, just to remind the board members that we do have our meeting next Monday night, so make sure that we have that on your calendar. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved. Motion by Ms. Blackwell. Second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And with that, I will say thank you to our Cabarrus County Deputy Sheriff, Jesse Gatlin, for being with us tonight, and good night to the viewing audience.